Welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the evening of February 28th. I note that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda is to begin our meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Tony Frazee of the Gateway Bible Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council of Mesa, Arizona, thank you for affording me this opportunity. Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we open this city council meeting up under your name, under your authority. God, we need your help in our city. We need your help in our great state of Arizona. We need your help in the great nation, the home of the free, the land of the brave. We ask you, God, to help us with this situation where war on every side. We ask you, God, to be with our sons and daughters, especially those that are deployed right now, and our entire military. We lift up our entire nation. We pray your kingdom come and your will to be done, Lord, on every level of our nation, starting tonight with this council meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda today is something we've all been looking forward to. This is the appointment of David Allen as a city magistrate. This has been discussed in previous meetings, but council, is there a motion to move forward on this item?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we appoint Mr. David Allen as our city magistrate.
Thank you, Mr. Luna, for making that motion. I see it seconded by Councilmember Heredia. Prior to calling for the vote, I'd like just to give the public a little background on Mr. Allen. I have a short bio on him. Mr. Allen earned his law degree in 2004 from the James E. Rogers College of Law at the University of Arizona and was appointed the Mesa City Court Commissioner in the year 2020. As commissioner, he presides over the Civil Division, oversees civil traffic offenses, and covers criminal dockets based on the needs of the court. He has experience in private, both private and municipal law, at both the state and local level. Mr. Allen has held various professional association positions and is currently a board member of the Arizona Black Bar and rotating liaison to the Collective Bar Association. And he's an active volunteer in helping those experiencing homelessness. So we have a motion and a second to proceed. Council, please cast your votes. The vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen, I would now invite you forward, and I will be honored to swear you in as a city magistrate. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, David Allen, do solemnly swear...
I, David Allen, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona...
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
...and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
...and that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
...discharge the duties of city magistrate...
Discharge the duties of city magistrate.
...of the city of Mesa, Arizona.
Of the city of Mesa, Arizona.
...according to the best of my ability, so help me, God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was really an honor and a privilege for me to participate in that. Congratulations, Judge Allen. And now we'd like to invite you to take a minute or two to express any thoughts that you might have as you embark on your career on the bench. So feel free to step up to the microphone and share anything that you'd like to... Right at the podium.
Okay. I want to thank everyone. My comments will be directed to many of the people in the audience. I won't take everyone's time and name individuals, and I apologize for that. But I want to thank the mayor and the council for putting your faith in me to sit as a magistrate in this city. I do truly appreciate that. To all of the parties that were involved, everyone that gave comments, I am humbled by the support of all the people that turned out today, truly humbled and surprised. And I want to thank everyone who took their time out of their very busy lives. But I want to let everyone know that I am honored, truly honored, to serve the community in this capacity, and I will continue to do my best as a sitting judicial officer and that I can continue to bring respect and dignity to the bench and raise up the judiciary here in our community. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'll just note that in the city of Mesa, we are very proud of our municipal court. It really stands out in our state as a great example of how to conduct a municipal court, very innovative with such programs as the Veterans Court, Community Court. Now, we're talking about adding a Domestic Relations Court. Very innovative. The quality of our magistrates is very high. I'm looking at several of them here that are supporting Mr. Allen. So, Mr. Allen, you're going to fit right in in a very impressive court. So we're grateful that you're here. Sorry about that. I can't talk about anything without getting choked up, so... But thank you. Congratulations to all of us. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We invite Mr. Kevin Christopher forward to read that consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 3, approval minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 4A, act on liquor license application for Arizona Sports and Entertainment Commission, one-day event, March 12th, Sloan Park Spring Training Fields, 2560 West Rio Salado Parkway. Item 4B, act on liquor license application for College Bound, one-day event, March 19th, 359 North Center Street. Item 4C, act on liquor license application for Ultimate Imaginations Incorporated, one-day event, March 12th, on Main Street from Center Street to Country Club Drive, and McDonald from Pepper Place to Main Street. Item 4D, act on liquor license application for Dash Mart, 3512 East Southern Avenue. Item 4E, act on liquor license application for Flights Wine &amp; Tap Room, 2513 North Thunderbird Circle. Item 4F, act on liquor license application for Quick Corner, 2015 West University Drive. Item 4G, act on liquor license application for Turbo Beverage and Grocery, 2760 East Main Street. Item 4H, act on liquor license application for the Stone Korean Tofu House, 6910 East Hampton Avenue. Item 5A, act on 60-month lease agreement for a color copier for the Business Services Department. Item 5B, act on three-year term contract with two years renewal options for language translation services for various city departments. Item 5C, act on contract to purchase furniture and chairs for the Mesa Police Department Special Operations Unit. This purchase is funded by the Public Safety Sales Tax. Item 5D, act on contract to purchase one liquid chromatograph triple quadrupole mass spectrometer for the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is funded by the Mesa Police Department, Town of Queen Creek, Town of Gilbert, and City of Tempe. Item 5E, act on contract to purchase a 3D scanner for the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is funded by lifecycle funds and non-asset forfeiture funds. Item 5F, act on contract to purchase furniture and workstations for the Mesa Police Department Aviation Unit. This purchase is funded by the Public Safety Sales Tax. Item 5G, act on three-year term contract with two years renewal options for video laryngoscopes for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 5H, act on contract to purchase high-availability data storage for the Department of Innovation and Technology. This purchase is funded by American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Item 5I, act on three-year renewal for the use of a cooperative contract for expansion of the very high-frequency fire hazard zone radio system for the TOPAS Regional Wireless Cooperative, as requested by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The purchase is funded by members of the Cooperative, Mesa, Gilbert, Supo position Fire Medical District, Queen Creek, and Rio Verde Fire District. Item 5J has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 5K, act on three-year term contract with two years renewal options for LED modules for traffic control signals for the Transportation Department. Item 5L, act on award of one additional vendor using the cooperative contract for the term contract for heavy-duty truck, construction, industrial fleet, and equipment parts, services, and accessories for the Fleet Services Department. Item 5M, act on contract for Red Mountain Park Expansion, Construction Manager at Risk, guaranteed maximum price number one. This project's funded by 2018 General Obligation Funds and Capital General Funds. Item 5N, act to authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the employment contract with the city auditor. Item 5O, act to authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the employment contract with the city attorney. Item 5P, act to authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the employment contract with the city manager. Item 6A, act on resolution regarding ZON 21-01090 for property located north of Southern Avenue on the west side of Country Club Drive. Site plan modification to allow restaurant with a drive-through. Item 6B, act on resolution regarding ZON 21-01064 for property located south of Pecos Road on the east side of the Crisman Road alignment. Site plan review to allow for an industrial development. Item 6C, act on resolution extinguishing a 20-foot storm drain easement located at 2044 West River View Auto Drive, which is no longer needed by the Union Mesa at River View Development. Item 6D, act on resolution adjusting the compensation for the decisions of city magistrate and presiding city magistrate effective January 31st, 2022. Item 6E, act on resolution authorizing continued negotiations for the acquisition of certain real property for the Broadway Road Phase 1 Mesa Drive to Stapley Drive project, and as a matter of public necessity, authorizing the acquisition through eminent domain of certain real property generally located along East Broadway Road between Southless Square and South Spur for right-of-way and easement purposes. Item 6F, act on resolution calling the primary election for August 2nd, 2022, designating election dates and providing the last date for candidates to file nomination papers. Item 7A, introduction of ordinance regarding ANX 21-00802, annexing property located south of Thomas Road and east of Al Vista Drive. Item 7B, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 21-00797 for property located south of Thomas Road on the east and west sides of Al Vista Drive. Rezone and plan area development overlay to allow for mixed-use development. Item 7C, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 21-01212 for property located north of the 202 Red Mountain Freeway on the east side of Al Vista Drive. Rezone with a planned area development overlay to allow for development of a single residence subdivision. Item 7D, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 21-00930 for property located north of the 202 Santan Freeway on the west side of Hawes Road. Rezone with a planned area development overlay to allow for an industrial development. Item 7E, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 21-01133 for property located south of Warner Road and west of the Hawes Road alignment. Rezone with a planned area development overlay and site plan review to accommodate an industrial development. Item 8A, act on ordinance regarding ZON 21-01025 for property located north of McKellips Road on the east side of Power Road. Rezone to establish commercial zoning for future development. Item 8B, act on ordinance regarding ZON 21-00595 for property located south of Warner Road and west of Ellsworth Road. Rezone with a planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for a mixed-use development, including commercial, office, and industrial uses. Item 8C, act on ordinance regarding ZON 21-00393 for property generally located north of Elliot Road on the west side of Hawes Road. Rezone with a planned area development overlay to accommodate development of a single residence subdivision. Item 8D, act on ordinance regarding ZON 21-00831 for property located south of Guadalupe Road on the west side of Signal Beat Road. Site plan modifications to allow for development of a restaurant with a drive-through. Item 9A, act on subdivision platte, the cubes at Mesa Gateway, for property located south of Pecos Road and north of Jermaine Road on the east side of Crisman Road. And item 9B, act on subdivision platte, Zen on Wrecker, for property located at the northeast corner of Wrecker Road and Baseline Road. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. So items 5J and 6E are off of the consent agenda. Ms. Mosley, other than those items, are there any requests to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson, for approval of the consent agenda. Please vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously. We'll now go to Agenda Item 5J. This is a three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for tire maintenance and repair services for the Fleet Services Department. We had some discussion of this downstairs, but if you don't mind, let's hear from staff what this contract is all about, and we'll proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The service contract was based for five certified tire technicians, full-time, for the repairs. There's one assigned on day shift. There's three assigned at nighttime, and then at the west facility, and then one at the east facility. The tire contractors come with their own service truck. They respond to road calls. They do the flat repairs, and they do the tire replacements. Approximately a year, we do approximately 4,600 tire replacements a year, 3,900 flat repairs, and over 300 road calls.
Okay. Thank you very much. I know downstairs, we kind of asked a few questions about this, but council, are there questions you'd like to pursue now before we go forward on this? Mr. Thompson?
I guess, you know, my concern continues to be that it's a service contract, and it's costing, you know, the citizens nearly a million dollars a year for five people to check tire treads, check the sidewalls, and check the air pressure in the tires, which our employees are already doing. And then outside of that, they're on call for 24/7 service and replacement of tires that we provide. You know, so the city's providing the tires, the weights, the lugs, and all they're doing is changing the tire and putting it on the vehicle. And it just seems, you know, nearly a million dollars a year is, you know, budgeted is a little... I don't know. To me, it seems a little excessive to duplicate service that our employees are doing and then just replacing tires. I could be wrong. I don't know what the normal contract looks like. You know, I don't know what history tells us as far as what does that cost? Is this in line with what we're typically costing historically? Is it costing us almost a million dollars a year to replace tires?
So the number of technicians has remained the same. We've kept the same five technicians busy for the last several years. The price of the contract has increased this year. The labor has almost doubled.
So how much does our tire contract cost us to purchase all of our tires, weights, and lugs?
So last year, the tires were nearly $950,000 for purchasing of the tires.
Wow. So it's almost as expensive to purchase the tires than it is to service the tires?
Quite a bit of labor that goes into some of these.
So there's no way that we could go back and take another stab at this or ask people to sharpen their pencils and really take a look at... Since our employees are already checking tires, you know, doing walkarounds on their vehicles, I was assured that they are doing that before they drive them. Could we eliminate some of that out of the language of the contract and say, for what we're wanting, we just want you to fix our flats and change our flat tires?
Sure. And we have that in the contract because during the time when they're not redoing the replacements, we do have them checked fast because they're on contract for us for eight hours a day while they're there. So they're busy the whole time, all night long when they're there.
Okay. And so they're invoicing, and we're keeping an eye on them.
Yes, sir.
Quality check. I saw in the RFP that we are doing quality checks on them, so that was a good thing. We're just not letting them roam freely.
Nope, we have.
Okay. Yeah, I still struggle with that. But I guess if that's the cost and that's what it takes, then that's the cost and that's what it takes. I just struggle paying almost a million dollars a year for someone to kick tires and check tread.
Downstairs, you indicated that this was competitively bid and that there were some other folks, businesses competing for this, but that some of the other competitors failed to respond by the cutoff time, or maybe they just failed to respond period with some of the necessary documentation. But...
Right. That's Mayor. They did respond. I think Ed mentioned that they just didn't have the backup materials to show us how they were going to do it. This is not the same contractor we have today.
This is not the same contractor.
So this is not... We're not just feeding back to the other contractors. So, Ed, come on up and just talk a little bit about that. Now, Mayor and Council, we could go out and rebid. My only hesitation is, when did we put this bid out? When was the timing?
Probably in January.
Yeah. I just don't think prices are getting cheaper, right? So we could rebid it. So we take the chance, maybe we get better bids, or just the opposite. And I wouldn't normally hesitate if it weren't for just the circumstances. Now, this is significantly higher than what we've paid before, but everything is. So we're kind of in this dilemma of do we keep... Go back out, see if we can get a better price, but if we go back out, we can't come back, right? So that's our dilemma. But, Ed, talk a little bit about the responses we got and why that was problematic for us.
Sure. The RFP requested a detailed explanation of how the vendors were going to accomplish the scope of work, the employees, the equipment. There are exceptions to our specifications and terms and conditions. And in essence, two of the three vendors that responded simply provided a price sheet, and that was basically all they supplied. So there was no way for us to score their proposal because they didn't include an explanation of how they were going to accomplish that, which was a significant part of the evaluation process.
All right. Mr. Freeman?
So, Ed, thank you for the explanation. I know some of these others that were deemed non-responsive. However, were they ever educated on how to do the bidding process? Because they're Mesa-based businesses, and I value that, that they're willing to bid on a Mesa contract. Do you... And to my point, Mr. Brady, is that I'm comfortable going out to rebid it. I don't think it's going to change much, but I know that's a lot of work on your end. But to allow these other two vendors to participate in the bid process, because when you tell me that they didn't quite follow in with all the procedural stuff that you're requesting, maybe that's a learning curve for them, just asking a question.
So we didn't reach out individually to these two vendors, but the RFP did include detailed instructions on how to respond and what elements were required in the response. And so if they had any problems with that, certainly if they called us during the proposal process, during the assembly of their proposal, we would have helped them, you know, explain, you know, or answering questions that they had. But they did not do that, and we got the response that we got. And because they didn't supply those elements, we have one vendor that complied with the RFP requirements. We have two that did not. We simply, because we do what we say, say what we do, we can't just simply say, we're just going to consider price and move forward from there. The RFP did outline what was required of all the vendors that were going to participate. And so if we changed the specs now, then we opened ourselves up that there might be other people that would have been willing just to submit a price sheet, in essence. And that wouldn't be fair to them either. And it wouldn't be fair to the vendor that did comply with the requirements. So we need to stick with what we said was a requirement in the RFP for this solicitation.
We could start over. And maybe now that they didn't get considered, maybe they would be more responsive. And the fact that they're local, maybe that gets their attention. This current contract we have expires end of March?
Correct.
March of...
Correct.
This year, right now. Or, yeah, tomorrow's next month. Yeah.
So the new contract starts in March for three years, or...
New contract would start at the end of March or the beginning of April. I don't remember how we worded it in the RFP. Usually we have a little...
For three years. It's a three-year contract.
With renewal options.
But again, if it's council preference, I... Listen, I mean, we just don't want to cut it too close, but maybe we feel like, maybe let's see if we get a better competitive bid. We're willing to do that. So I just... I want to come back and tell you it's more. But that's... We can take that risk. I don't care. I mean, we can do that.
And so here's my dilemma. So Gomez Tire submitted a bid, and their bid was $239,850. So the contractor that we actually awarded it to, just because Gomez Tire didn't complete all of the necessary paperwork, we awarded the contract to somebody that's almost four times what the lowest bid was.
Yeah, let's just be careful, though. We're making the assumption that $239, which would be almost half as much as the current contract or even more, really understood what they're doing. That's why that detail is needed, because we would never issue... We would never award that contract just based on that. We want them to make sure they understand all the details. So I get that number is interesting to look at, but right now, we can't say that it's apples to apples.
I think, too, if you look at that scheduled prices that was put in there for analysis purposes, I believe the number of hours that were indicated was 2,080. And as Mike said, this is five employees, basically, full-time, which is actually more than a 2,080.
So 2,080 is one employee at that rate for a full year. So you'd have to multiply that times five. So you get pretty close to the number we had. If you need five employees, so five times 2,080, which is a full year.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia?
Is this... You mentioned we currently have this vendor working, or this is a new vendor that will be coming in?
It's a new vendor.
It's a new vendor. Okay.
Mr. Luna?
So the contract is for $900,980.
$980.
So is this the cap on it? Or it says like there could be a 5% increase, but is it possible it could be lower? Is that even a possibility?
Yes. The amount that we've asked council for approval is an upper limit. So the expenditures will be based on the actual usage.
Okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I want to make sure I understood something you said earlier, Mr. Brady. This contract starts in March.
The current contract ends...
Ends in March.
End of March. So the new contract is somewhere at the end of March, 1st of April. So we're going to obviously have coverage.
Overlap.
Overlap, yeah.
Okay. So that seems like a pretty tight turnaround. Do we have time... If we were to say, okay, let's explore, you know, give these folks an opportunity...
Sure.
Is that...
What do you think, Ed?
We would have to amend the existing contract and extend it for a period of time to cover that.
But we could do that. I mean, if council... Listen, this may be one of those issues where let's give it a try and go back out. It's a...
And I think to your point, you know, we spend a lot of time promoting small businesses in Mesa, and that's where I'm at. I think it's time that we just go back to the drawing board, we rebid it, and see, maybe they didn't understand the full process, and then go from there. But I think that... And then you can say, well, it's not fair to board a tire because they are the actual winner of the bid, but yet they have the right to come back and review their bid and proposal, and we'll see who's the lowest bidder and meets all your criteria on there, and hopefully we get the right person. And what timeframe are we talking? If you go out to rebid, 45 days? You can use the existing contractor, right? I mean...
We've got to go back and... We've got to negotiate their rates.
I mean, but you're talking maybe 60 days or so?
Correct.
60 days.
So, no, this is fine. We can do that. We can do this.
Okay. I can see that staff's not opposed to doing a reset on this.
So just can we pull this item off the council agendas appropriate, and then we'll just come back after we'll go through a rebid on this?
Before we do that, I think we need to make sure everyone's said what they're...
Yeah. Just one more comment. I think it'd be behoove of us to ensure that we actually need five employees, you know, because maybe we can get away with, you know, one on the west side, one on the east, and maybe one or two that are changing tires. So maybe we only need, you know, three...
Right now, they keep...
I mean, that'll be up to the contractor, obviously.
Yeah.
But I think we need to be careful what we ask for and then also ensure what we're asking for.
Yeah. I think we're pretty set on what we know what we need. We've been doing this for a while. So I think it's just a matter of educating the other bidders, make sure they can get all their information in.
Mr. Luna?
I am concerned about those, the contractor that we were potentially awarding. They followed the regulations, their Ps and Qs. If you can't do that, you have a problem. So I do have an issue with that. So you want to make sure that if you're going to be bidding, you've got to make sure you follow instructions, because we're all required to follow instructions to get what we need to end. And so that would be my concern, my reservation.
Julie?
I guess I would ask, was there clear instructions? Like, was it really clear to all the companies what they were supposed to do?
In my assessment, absolutely. There was, it's general instructions, as well as a list of what should be included within each tab, as well as quest, specific questions.
Because that, to me, that's like a sign that they maybe don't want the contract. I mean, we had a small business, and if we were going to bid something, and we knew that they were going to just go with the lowest bidder, and they didn't care about the quality of our service, we didn't go through the whole hassle of putting in a bid if we didn't want it.
The fact they only gave us a price sheet and one person at 280 hours, that's...
I mean, that, to me, is a sign that they don't want the contract. That's how I see it. I don't know.
And I should add, we do state in the RFP that if a response is incomplete, it's considered non-responsive. And that's why we're here today with one of the three responses.
Well, we've got, it's hard to know what the consensus here is. We could put it up for a vote, and that would clearly help us know how people feel. I'll, I'll just express, we talk a lot about supporting small businesses, the fact that we've got some local small businesses that, that potentially could get a lucrative contract with the city. I think that's great. I, I'd like to err on the side of making sure that the local small businesses have every opportunity. I understand that, that they should have responded better, but maybe we, maybe that's the point. These are some businesses that we can kind of help nurture them and help them become a little more competitive and sophisticated in the way they respond to their, to these things. So, I, I don't oppose pulling this from the agenda and having staff bring it back.
Mike, are you comfortable that the current contractor will extend for 30 days?
No, I'm not comfortable with that. They're having problems getting this amount of labor nightly, as it is. They're running short on their contractors, on their tire specialists over there, and that's one of the reasons why we went out for another contract. They've been unable to uphold getting us the service we have. And that, so that's one of our major concerns, as the vendor isn't able to take care of all of our needs. And with the Boarder Tire contract, they, they service some large vendors, like the City of Phoenix, United Dairyman, a lot of large fleets. So, that's, that's our number one concern.
So, that's good to know, so the status quo is not working.
And I feel like they could, you know, substantially increase their prices for that extension, because they know that we don't have any other option.
Yeah.
And then we have to take it, right? Because we don't have another choice.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't, if someone would, right now, this is on our agenda for approval. So, would someone like to make a motion to approve this item?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead and do it. Like, Ms. Spillsbury has made a motion, seconded by Vice Mayor Duff. Again, we are voting to award this contract to the winner of the bid. And I'm going to explain my vote, because I said just a moment ago that I was open to extending it, but having heard the, but I think is some important information, which is, we're actually, things aren't working well right now, and that we need to solve this problem. I'm going to vote in, in favor of awarding the contract. So, I will vote. We, the motion passes five to two. Oh, I'm, yes, most, motion passes five to two. Thank you very much. And thank you to staff for your, your help on helping us figure out where we're at on that. Next item on our agenda is item 6E. This is authorizing continued negotiations for the acquisition of certain real property for the Broadway Rose Phase One Mesa Drive to Safely Drive project. As a matter of public necessity, authorizing the acquisition through eminent domain of certain real property in Mesa generally located along East Broadway Road between South Lesweare and South Spur. We do have someone, I believe, online, or do we have someone in person?
Mayor, he's present. Carlos Acosta.
Carlos Acosta, yes.
Yes, he's in the audience.
Mr., okay. Welcome, Mr. and Mrs. Acosta. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name.
Buenos dias a todos, el Consilio y el público en general.
Before you begin to...
Mi nombre es Carlos Acosta.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Acosta, you have three minutes.
Okay.
We'll expand that to six minutes, because you have an interpreter. Please give us your name and your address.
Okay. Mi nombre es Carlos Acosta, y mi domicilio es 411 Sur Spencer.
My name is Carlos Acosta, and I live on 411 Sur, South Spencer in Mesa.
Y vengo sobre la mejora de la imagen de Broadway. Estamos de acuerdo en la, en la venta del, del terreno para la ampliación de la calle. Lo único que pedimos es que los controles de SRP los dejen donde originalmente los habían marcado, porque los quieren cambiar a la esquina, y estamos pensando en la seguridad de mi nieta, y es lo que, lo único que pedimos, que originalmente queden donde los puso SRP.
I totally agree with eminent domain. I agreed to sell part of my property to improve the Broadway Street. The only thing I ask you is for, to make sure this process is considered the safety of the neighbors, because SRP is changing, as part of this project, SRP is changing the lines, I think, underground, and they are planning, originally, they plan to put some equipment or controls on one side of Broadway, and now they have decided to move those equipment to the corner of Spencer and Broadway. It's right on his house corner, so he's thinking in the safety of his granddaughter.
Gracias, gracias, sería todo.
That'll be all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, just to, just to restate what we've heard on this item in our study session, this is, we're widely, well, Mr. Brady, you would do a better job of describing this.
Well, we're, we're improving Broadway, and I think the Vice Mayor did an awesome job last week talking about it. Really, this is both functional space to create lanes for bikes and for pedestrians, but it's also aesthetically trying to improve this area. To do that, we need some small strips of, of land for easements. So, we appreciate the gentleman for participating, willing to work with us on that. So, thank you very much for that. I think what the issue sounds like is with, what I'm assuming, I don't know, SRP's putting up some pedestals, Beth, from their project. Is that what I'm hearing? It's, maybe we can work with SRP on that.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of the project, we're going to be undergrounding some of the SRP overhead power lines, and I believe there's a cabinet that has to go on this corner. So, we'll work with Mr. Acosta and make sure that his concerns are alleviated. Those cabinets are everywhere, all over the City of Mesa, and they're very safe. He may also be concerned about the safety during construction. We'll, we'll always make sure that that's the case.
Okay. Thank you. So, this is on our agenda for approval. Council, any additional comments or discussion on this item? If not, would someone like to make a motion? Thank you. Mr. Freeman has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Heredia, for approval. Please vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item 10A. This is to take action on a Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license application for Convenience Mart at 757 South Country Club Drive. As a reminder, the City Council does, we don't issue liquor licenses. We make recommendations to the State Liquor Board, but they do seek our, our counsel on their 12 different criteria that we can look at for making recommendations of approval or denial. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Good catch. You almost said Mickelson.
No.
You're quick. Yes, we do. We have Elizabeth Aliski. She's the spokesperson for Arizona Care Network on the line in support of this item.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear from her. If you can hear us, welcome to the Mesa City Council meeting. Please, please tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Hey there. Thank you very much. Elizabeth Aliski here. Can you hear me?
Yes. You have three minutes.
Excellent. Ah, thank you. I also have physical representation in the room as well, if you, if you need them to speak. I'm, I'm not sure if you received the documentation, but I tried to submit a PowerPoint presentation showing some of the improvements that we have made to this particular address. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but this building was a flower shop many years ago, and then was left vacant during those vacant times. You know, lots of uncleanly activities were occurring there, whether that be, you know, people just hanging out, or just trash collecting. Last year, an investor came in, built up a Convenience Mart, and then my partner and I purchased it late in September. And at that point, we added hot food service as well. So, you'll see the crispy crunchy chicken signs out there. And so, what customers have been asking of us is to provide one additional product, and that product being beer. They've asked for a multitude of reasons. One, because some of it just like to have it with their, with their hot meals after a hard day's work, but mostly because a lot of folks are saying that they prefer coming into our facility versus going to the one across the street from us. I don't know if I'm allowed to say it, but there's a Circle K right across Eighth Avenue there, at that same intersection of Eighth Avenue and Country Club. They say because the employees at our establishment are nicer, friendlier, our facility is cleaner, both inside and out. So, if they could just use it as a one-stop shop, they absolutely would prefer that. And then, the other documentation I have in the presentation is that, in preparation for said activities occurring at our establishment, we've gone what I believe is above and beyond, in that we have all our filings with the City of Mesa for the trespass enforcement program. We have our signs installed on all sides of the property. We have installed additional lighting, again, on all sides of the property. We've also installed security systems, not only camera, but also security doors, things like that, so where folks can't just hang out, because when we close at night, we also have a gate system in front of the, the front entrance that does not allow folks to just be hanging out by their, the area. So, we think we've spent plenty of time, money, and effort into making sure that our facility, you know, never is something that folks just are allowed to hang out and make a mess on, where, which I know that's a concern for a portion of the community. But, I think we've got all of that covered by not allowing that to happen, and we just want to be able to provide, like I said, a one-stop shop for our customers, and it's what they're asking for. And we do have, if you want to see additional documentation, we put out signup sheets, and folks have made these comments on the signup sheets about, you know, them wanting to have this product available to them, so that they don't have to, you know, make multiple stops along their way home from work.
Okay, thank you. So, you're the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. You're, you're not bound by the three-minute mark, so I, just to explain to those in the crowd what was being overindulgent in letting you speak. But, thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Mosley, do we have any other requests to speak?
No further requests.
Okay, thank you. Council, is there a discussion on this item? Mr. Freeman.
So, I know that Vice Mayor talked about it, but I, I've also done some research. You know, we have some of the business owners there that are not wanting this business to go in due to the inherent problems of the area. And then I looked at just the overall health of that area. There's currently 26 current beer and wine applications, liquor applications in that area, and it encompasses 21,000 people. And this area was not specifically an opportunity zone, but it's in the southwest corner of our development area. And, and I don't know if that's going to change, you know, the integrity of that area. And I, I just felt like, you know, over, over through the years, having worked that area in the public safety sector, it's, there's a lot of work for our public safety personnel. And, and I'm, I'm just, I'm not going to support this right now. I think that currently, we can do better, and I appreciate the business. It's a local-owned business, I understand that. But, does it improve the area? This area's going to be hard, hard to improve. So, with that, I'm going to be voting no, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Vice Mayor.
Yes, just to add on to, I, I made comments during the study session, and I don't want to repeat a lot, but I would like to say that I'm in support of, supporting small business owners that are making a difference and challenge neighborhoods, that they're standing to do everything that they can, working with the PD Department, the neighbors, and being involved in the community to transform it, to stand for what is possible. And I hope with that commitment and that presence, that we see businesses that are not making those efforts wane in their business, and maybe the property be sold, or, you know, their sales detract from having an up, a business that is doing business right. So, if it was a chain with not active management, with only a clerk behind the counter, and that was the only commitment, I would agree with you. We don't need another business like that in the neighborhood. It is not contributing to keeping it safer. From what I saw this property looking like in 2019 and what it is today, I think it's a definite improvement. And I've received word from a number of different entities of her commitment and attempts to really do right by the property and the neighborhood, and being part of that neighborhood. So, I'm in support of this. Originally, I wasn't, because I thought it was just another chain Convenience Mart that didn't have that commitment, and I have changed my mind, and in support of the approving the liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Is the, is a Series 10 beer and wine store license, does that allow for consumption on the premises? I mean, is the practice, it, it does not. So, this would be buying packaged liquor and, and consuming it off of the premises. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor and Council, Tim Meyer, Licensing Administrator. This is for off-sale liquor only, so it's beer and wine off-sale. So, no consumption on property.
Okay. The hot food that was described earlier, is that, is there a place, do people come in, sit down, eat? No, so it's takeout, hot food?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, understand. Okay, thank you. I voted no last time. This business was up for, or this location was up for a liquor license for the, a lot of the reasons that Mr. Freeman, and I know the Vice Mayor voted no as well last time, because the Guerrero Park neighborhood needs help, and it doesn't need another liquor store. And so, I was comfortable in, my intention was to vote against this application. But, having heard about the Vice Mayor's research and, and her impression of, of the applicant, I'm, I'm going to change my mind and vote in favor of it, for the same reasons I voted against it last time, because the Guerrero Park neighborhood needs help. And so, if we've got a, a small business that's investing in the community and is going to be an active contributor to the community, I want to see them be successful. And I think it'd be difficult for a convenience store to be successful if we tied one or two of your hands behind your back and didn't allow you to, to sell alcohol. So, so I, I've evolved on this and will be supporting it. But, again, I, I absolutely understand the concerns of many in the neighborhood, that this Guerrero Park neighborhood is, needs help from every possible source, and I, I hope we can provide that. Other comments, Council? All right, we have a, a motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your votes. All right, it passes six to one. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is item 11A. I have declared a conflict of interest on this, so, Madam Vice Mayor, will you conduct Agenda item 11A, please?
Yes. Item 11A is to take, is to take, oh, yes, we do need a mic for this. Okay. Item 11A is to take action on a pre-construction services contract for the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. We had a presentation on this important water and treatment plant expansion at our study session last Thursday. Do we have any council members who would like to discuss it further? Given no, we have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, and seconded by Councilmember Spillsbury. Please cast your vote. And that is unanimously approved, with the exception of the mayor, who has abstained. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next item on our agenda is item 12. Items from citizens present. Do we have any requests to speak, Ms. Mosley?
No, Mayor, no further requests.
All right, thank you. That completes all the items on our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.